I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almost busted there.
Thank you. It's item number one. Item number two is an acceptance, well, public comments, I guess, is item number one. Do we have public comments tonight? Okay.
Am I supposed to stand back here behind the microphone?
You can stand anywhere you want tonight.
If you want to sit, you can sit.
We're kind of alone tonight. You can stand pretty much anywhere you want.
I hear on the same topic about that parking area next to my house.
Okay.
We reviewed our notes and stuff and, you know, now they're starting to use the parking area. This is what they paved three feet, 10. You know, item number three here says, you know, care has to be employed while developing existing plots and stuff. Obviously, this area here used to have a 15-foot setback when we bought our house. The former restaurant, Mei Ling, knocked that down to five feet one day, which was sort of strange. And I have a photograph to prove that was 15 feet because my house is 11 feet away.
Can you do your fair?
And now it's three feet, 10 inches.
Can you tell me what address are we talking about because I'm not remembering where your house is actually located?
My house is number 50.
Wall Fam Street, right across from the old...
50 Wall Fam?
Yeah. On one side, the buried brook is on one side of my property and the giant concrete wall is on the other side.
Thank you.
This is a picture of the wall, if anybody doesn't know. It's a story tall. It's 100 feet long and about 160 feet the other way. So there's several reasons why that can't be used. You know, you can see the fence is still demolished.
Well, the fence being demolished, who hit the fence? Is your fence?
People plowed. And when they're not plowing, they just simply run into it.
But it's your fence, correct?
Yeah.
And someone's hit it. Who, I mean, I, you know, who?
Well, this damage here would have been done by people plowing until the snow was gone and then they just run into it. And then further back...
Yeah, but my point, my point being that that's a matter for the Maynard Police Department. If someone's driving into your fence or damaging your fence, they should come out and, you know, speak to whoever owns the property and is paying someone to plow it.
Yeah. They're plowing at 2:00 in the morning. They disappeared before the police get there.
But the property owner is, the property owner doesn't disappear.
Yeah, I agree with you, but it's been going on for many years, ever since the place was built on the other side of my house in 1997.
Have the police been involved in the plowing piece?
Uh, we've had them there, let's see. I think, I think we only had the police there for people climbing over our fences and vandalizing.
If some, if someone hits your fence, right?
Okay. I'm just trying to head it off. There's not supposed to be anything plowed there.
No, but I'm, but you're, but you're...
Yeah. Well, I agree with you.
But you're showing me a picture of a fence that's damaged, right? And it's, the Maynard Police Department will gladly send an officer out to speak to the property owner. It's his responsibility regardless of who's driving the plow. If we're at that point, as far as the rest, where are we with that, Kevin? Because we got the package of information before. We were going to send someone to take a look at all these things that are taking place at 50 Wall Fam Street and make a...
Yeah, I have an update from the town engineer, which I've just sent the board. But there's further discussion and investigation with some of his, you know, affirmations from when he was out there to confirm tomorrow when he's in, back again in the office tomorrow. Initially, though, his review was that there was no setback requirements for the driveway issue, and I think that's where most of the complaint in your letter was.
When this came up months ago, there was a bylaw and it said 10 feet.
Well, we haven't changed the bylaw in that regard since I've been on the board. So if there is a bylaw, who would be handling that? Rick Asman?
Yes.
Have you spoken to Rick, the building inspector? I mean, that falls under his...
I'd rather not.
Huh?
I'd rather not.
That's the process. Because all I'm going to have to do is, I mean...
When this came up before, there had been approval of a parking area right down the side, right along the top of that wall, one foot from the top of that edge. And vehicles had driven off that wall in the past. They had overhung it, including a school bus, which was six feet out over the fence. So putting a driveway, and they had an approval for that plan. And that, and that had been approved by someone downstairs. So, you know, now it's three foot, 10 inches, and it's not parallel with the side of the property as close to my house as possible. There's just a lot of reasons why that can't be done. We have to protect the validity of the bylaws. We can't allow vehicles like, like these big vehicles to operate anywhere near the top of the wall because they generate diesel. And diesel is, that diesel idling is regulated by the Department of Environmental...
They have five minutes.
Yeah.
Five minutes is the max allowable.
And sometimes people, and you can sit there for the full five minutes, almost like they're looking at a watch. Other times, it goes off for an hour. And that's a lot of accumulation which we can actually measure in our yard with CO detector. Anyways, it's just a simple thing. If they can just take this away, turn that back into law. It was put there by mistake. They can just knock it out. I mean, I had to remove a piece of driveway once and I just used a hammer. You know, I just went across, chopped it up, and then I came back with a shovel and bingo, it was gone.
Mr. Hall, if I could, we're not going to get anywhere tonight with the Board of Selectmen of the discussion of this. Tomorrow, Wayne Amico, the town engineer, will be in, you know, and he can discuss some of those particulars further with you. He was out at your property, at least the subject that you're discussing. Wayne Amico, the town engineer, as well as Aaron McClosco, our DPW director. Both of them visited the site last week and have given us a brief update.
So they are working on it.
Yeah, so they're, they're exploring it. But, I mean, if you have the specific particulars that he wouldn't be able to, you know, surmise from your letter, that you feel you need to talk through with him, then perhaps we could set up a meeting with, you know, for you and Wayne to meet to talk about those issues. Were you, you weren't, you weren't home when they were out at the site that you knew of?
I, I, we've been off and busy lately.
Okay. Yeah, they were out there. I want to say they were out last Wednesday. He did provide me with a, an update, but there was still a few things that he needed to confirm with Rick Asman, the building commissioner, and the zoning enforcement officer.
Oh.
Are you available tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a phone number on that letter?
No.
Or one you can leave us? That way, I think, I mean, your, the issues you're raising are quite a bit of a, from a technical nature and something that, you know, Wayne and Aaron could handle better than, you know, this, this meeting. Do you want to leave me with that?
I'll just start with what people said they didn't, weren't familiar with the town bylaw. I mean, that strikes me as a little odd. I have a hard copy of that at home and it was, and it was used before. I mean, I don't see how this becomes a major problem if it's, if it's certainly within 10 feet of the boundary. And other than that, it's a disturbance, 11 feet from the house.
And I drove by and I must say, it looks awfully close to the edge of the house, but there's a window there. Is that your bedroom?
The bedroom's upstairs.
It's upstairs, okay. Because there's a window, almost like as if a car pulled in, the lights would shine right in the window, which is from me to Chris away, from, I mean, from me to Terrence away.
That is a particular... It's, it's just upstairs.
Yeah, we'll have to confirm with, you know, bylaw setbacks, but I know this particular project was part of an A and R and it wasn't a site plan review, so there's typically no public works, you know, site plan review. It's from a building construction standpoint.
What we notice is that this house and this parking area are as much as possible, they're a mirror image of the 1997 property that caused all the problems. I mean, that, that's got a four-foot, if you want to call it setback, all the way down. And even on Friday, they're so close, they just brought their leaf blowers out and blew all the leaves into my yard. And they blow them on the fence, and the fence, which used to stand six to 18 inches above the ground, is buried in this accumulation of debris from all the years. There isn't anything to be gained by parking this close to my house on this side, just as there really isn't now on the other side. So if you'd like this, or I can give it to Kevin.
Well, let Kevin have it because he's going to give it to Wayne and Wayne will follow up.
Afternoon? Okay?
Yeah, okay.
Are you, I mean, are you around also?
If I have to go, I'll call him.
What's that?
If I have to go somewhere, I'll call him.
Okay. I'll have him, I'll have him get in touch with you. I said, he's, he's the one that I had look into it, and he's typically only here on Wednesday.
Certainly, I mean, but certainly the neighbors in front, back, and behind, and the sides don't have the right to blow their refuse into your yard.
Right.
And they don't have the right to hit your fence and not repair it.
That's...
I mean, those are issues that the Maynard Police Department has to address.
Well, some other neighbors have to...
If they have to be brought to their attention, but they have to be brought to their attention. Well, I'm here and this is, this is, you know, it's seven o'clock at night. I don't have anything I can do, but I don't have any, and I don't have any power to enforce those things.
Yeah, I, I just mention that as some of the many reasons, you know. I mean, when winter comes, they're going to have to plow this area.
Yeah, I understand that.
It's just another, it's like one of four issues. And the town bylaws are created for court bond and for the safety of the people and the property values, and that's all I'm doing. I'm just saying, those were probably some of the reasons when the bylaw was created, you know.
Okay.
Anyways, we have other things to do.
Okay. No, that's just fine. Thank you very much. And Kevin will have Wayne call you tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you.
Hopefully provide some resolution. Any further public comments? Yes, Vic?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment if I may while ruffling the board's feathers. I came here to the last selectmen meeting and it was very discouraging to see that the citizens of the town are not properly accommodated for the meeting on insurance.
A point, a point, a point that you raised at the meeting last time...
That's right, Mr. Chairman, but you have to remember, sir, that it is incumbent on you or the town administrator or somebody to provide accommodations for the people attending the meeting. And I don't consider people standing all the way out into the main hall, the entryway, proper accommodations for a meeting. It's not very comfortable to stand either leaning against the wall or standing up without getting, being against the wall. To listen to somebody make a presentation, it takes quite a period of time. I, I, I think that's just a disregard for the, for the citizens of the town who took the time to come up here. And I think probably, you were probably not aware of the fact that it would create this many people to show up. But I honestly believe that, and I know that you can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. And clearly, clearly, we didn't expect the...
It's not funny, Mr. Donovan, I'll tell you. It's not funny.
You know what's funny, Mr. Tommo? Because you said the same thing last week and we acknowledge you. Now we just let you do it again.
That's right.
So you said your point, public comment, you had your public comments on. I don't think I need to hear anything else from you about it.
Okay, but if you think the public comments are something to laugh about, I think you better take another thing.
Well, I don't need you to tell me how to feel or how to react.
I don't care how you feel.
That's great.
Quite frankly, I really don't care.
You seem to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan.
Okay. I mean, it's a, a point well taken, a point well made, and, you know, we've discussed it, that, you know, going forward, we, I never can anticipate how many people are going to walk through that door. So, I mean, you know...
Can I speak on that? A little bit, can I ask a question? Sometimes I come and there's a large crowd and I, I can't find parking. Is the, across the street designated parking at the gas station or something?
No, that's private property.
Because I have parked way down, like way down past Clark Dollar Place, that's...
Yeah, and so, and that's, there's a, parking is definitely an issue when typically when, when there's an anticipation of an extremely large crowd, this meeting's moved to another facility that can handle the crowd. We did not expect the number of people to come the other night that came and, you know, so we were kind of stuck with a little bit of an overflow crowd and they all could fit in a room. And some of those, I think on several occasions, I asked everyone to come and, you know, everyone that wished to, to come inside more, and some of the guys that didn't want to come in just said, no, I'll stand here. So, I mean, you know, we certainly didn't ignore those people, although we did not necessarily have a place for them to sit, sit. But I know they all went and got their points across when they wanted them to be made at the end of the meeting, so there must have been enough room to have something going on. All right, anyone else? Public comments, you two? No? All right, so acceptance of the minutes. Kevin has asked that we delay acceptance of the minutes of the 20th, which is okay by me, so we'll do the minutes of the 6th, first. And a motion is to accept and approve the minutes of September 6th, 2016, as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jason. Any comments on the minutes of the 6th? Who's in favor of accepting the minutes of the 6th? Thank you. Okay. So the minutes of the 20th, I guess there's some, some issues that Kevin is, we're working through, Kevin?
Yeah, there's some proposed corrections and changes, and then individual members, if they could look at their comments.
Right.
Specific for that night as well.
So I have, I have a piece of paper that I'm going to give to you and Becky.
Okay.
That I'd like to have just become part of the minutes and attached to the minutes of the 20th, for the matter of clarification. And they, they're in regards to my son's employment with NFP. He is presently employed by NFP. And Ken Lombardi and Joe Layden do not work for the same division of NFP, which is the Global Benefits Administrator. They do not work at the same division, that's the first thing. Secondly, I fully intend to vote on any action on 32B, 21, 22, or 23, regardless, because that has nothing to do with NFP. But the only piece of the, I would say is, if at some point the town administrator enters into a negotiation with NFP for the purchase of health care through NFP, I would consult with town council to determine whether or not I should recuse myself from that discussion. But certainly, I, my comment was not that I would not vote on, it was that I wouldn't vote, but that was getting to, you know, trying to get to the point, if they were selling us insurance, I wouldn't vote. It had nothing to do with...
Yeah, and they haven't been engaged as a broker.
Correct. So anyways, I'll give this to you guys to, I'll put that into the record as part of it, but certainly, I'm not, you know, if you want to send a piece, send a copy to the fire department for Mr. Latta, you can do that as well, since he seemed very interested in my activities, but it's just my opinion. So we're going to do the next minutes of the 20th, we're going to put those off, right? We're going to delay those?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. And then the correspondents, A through Y, move to accept and approve the list of correspondences as shown, A through Y. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tim. All those, oh, any comments on those? I want the, what did we do for Concord, Kevin? Is that, is that on the consent, they sent us the...
Yeah, there was some mutual aid response from our public safety folks.
Okay.
For the tornado. It was a, yeah, it was a thank you for assist, mutual aid assistance after the tornado.
Correct.
Actually nice that that was recognized by the town of Concord as well.
And I've attended some debrief, myself and Aaron have attended a, early last week, a debrief with MEMA, Mass Emergency Management, and the folks from Concord in our regional group with a debrief of the response actions and outcomes there, so.
You know, we, are we, it's, I mean, they did something on the first. Did they go out and do that thing still?
Perambulation.
Walk the boundary?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know if they, I don't know if the weather ended up keeping them in or not.
Could be very muddy in some of those locations.
I'd say it could be pretty muddy. Up behind my house is...
We could follow up with them to find out if they haven't, that was a last minute notification.
Are we required to do the same thing too?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, just noticed those two.
If they haven't done it, maybe we can, you know, maybe they've planned it a little more notice.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it can be conflicted with some other things that we were working on too, so we had...
Okay. All right, so any other comments on those correspondence items? All those in favor of accepting the correspondence? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a question, sir.
You may.
Correspondence, the letter, oh.
Yep.
Are you sending a letter to your own boys to tell us that you're going to have a special town meeting on 1/9/17? I don't...
That was the traditional public, yeah, it was the traditional public notice. It was just something that, you know, when we announced to the other people within, not only outside in the community, but also here in Town Hall.
I assume this is correspondence that's coming into the board, although...
Yeah, valid point.
Okay. But I'm just wondering why it's listed on the correspondence rather than the supplemental?
Yeah, it's a notice to town administration residents.
Still on the correspondence, Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, I'm just telling you what it is. I don't disagree with it.
Okay, thanks.
The consent agenda, the only one item is change the block, the date of the block body bulk and lane from the 1st to the 22nd. Move to an, move to accept and approve the consent agenda as shown. Here was second?
Second. Kevin, given the authority that we gave to you recently...
It's only on there because it was an initial approval by the board. So the initial one for the first...
It was one that we had already approved.
It had after, yeah. Otherwise, for any future...
Otherwise, in the future, you can do those.
It should be the end, yeah.
Okay.
Just because the board approved the initial one.
Makes sense.
So, I know we, we talked about, so the requests will go in the correspondence or the consent, but you'll still do the approving?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I thought we said. All right, any other comment on the consent agenda?
Just to clarify for that, we are still going to approve them in a consent agenda item, rather than just put them in as, you've already approved.
The board will just get notified.
So they make them into a correspondence?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correspondence from town administrator to us?
Yes.
Or from the individuals?
No, from, from me, yeah.
From you? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you, welcome. All right, we're going to put to last the one-day liquor license for the Boys and Girls Club of Assamit Valley. You guys are up. Come on, you guys are up.
Oh, I thought you were serious.
Just teasing. No, I wouldn't do that to her. She would kill me.
Hi.
All right, so what are you going to do? Same thing as every year?
Yes.
And that, I know in the past, in the past, it was something like one beer per person deal?
Correct.
Is that what it was?
Yes.
And then they can buy their own from, no?
We don't sell beer after now. It's a one beer, but I think in the past, if there was extra and the runners were still in the 21-plus zone with their bracelets, we would...
We could take a donation.
We could take a donation, but it wasn't, we didn't sell the beer.
All right. I think last year, it was, the year prior, it was one. Last year, I think, was two tickets because they had so much an abundance of donations from them.
Right.
And it was similar the year prior that they ended up giving, I think, two tickets to eligible age runners. Is that still...
That's still the case, yes.
So do we...
This year is going to be a little different. In the past, we've gotten bottles of beer that we've had serve safe people, serve. This year, we've got a donation of four mini kegs. It will be the same idea, that it will be two serve safe adults serving the beer with, to 21-plus people wearing the appropriate bracelets, but we will start off with the one beer based on whether we don't know if they're going to foam or how they're going to pour, but, so that's the case.
Okay. Where is it this year? This parking lot?
It's going to be...
It's at Mill and Main.
Mill and Main.
Okay. All right. All right, so the... At the Main Street or...
Sudbury Street.
Sudbury Street.
So it's Building 5 parking lot?
The larger parking lot.
Way in the back or up closer to...
It's going to be towards the middle, I think, right in between the...
That's a good compromise.
So, yeah, so right in the middle of the three lots, I think, is where it's positioned.
And that will be roped off, so people can't leave, obviously, that area with any alcohol.
All right. Okay, so the motion is to move to accept and approve the one-day liquor license for the Boys and Girls Club of Assamit Valley on Saturday, October 8th, 2016. There's a note below that says the cost is $85, tip certification required for all servers, purchase of liquor from an approved ABCC seller, and a public safety sign-off. And then there was just a question, your approval from Mill and Main to use the site. What'd you do?
We did.
Okay, so we have a second.
Second.
Do we have any further comments on this particular item? All those in favor? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jen.
Jen, okay, Jen, thank you too, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Fun with the event.
We'll see you at the next event.
Awesome. Sounds great. Have a good day.
All right, thanks. All right, next item is item number six, a one-day full liquor license request for Amory's Maynard Cafe, DEC Connection, on October the 8th, 2016, from 3:00 PM until 7:30 PM. And the motion is move to accept and approve the one-day full liquor license for Amory Maynard Cafe on Saturday, October 8th, 2016, from 3:00 until 7:30. Also includes a note, the cost is $85, tip certification required for all servers, crowd management certificate, public safety sign-off, and purchase liquor from an approved ABCC seller. Do we have a second?
Elizabeth?
Yes, she is.
Can I right on time?
You're right on time.
Oh, maybe about two minutes.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Okay, so, so what are we doing, Elizabeth?
We are doing an event for DEC Connection at Amory Maynard's on October 8th.
Okay, what is, do, do you know what DEC Connection is?
Yeah, it was Digital, I believe, was the company. They had a...
Reunion group?
Yeah, it's Digital Equipment Corporation, Dex Reunion.
Alumni.
And where is it?
It's going to be in the cafe, in Amory Maynard's Cafe, correct.
Okay.
I got a question. I got a question.
Yeah.
Is there liquor in the cafe now?
There is no liquor in the cafe right now.
So I guess my question is, when we've done some of these similar type things, and I'm not opposed to this at all, but when we did some of these in the past, there's been delivery dates, that we had to have a license for the delivery date, and then the day of the event, and then a license for another day, because somebody comes to pick it up. Is this all being done in one day, or is there a need to have those?
Yeah, it's all being done in one day. It's being sponsored through 29 Sudbury, which is our other location. So we're just basically bringing the bar right over on Saturday, and all of that product is sponsored through 29, so we're ordering it through 29, and it's all going right back into that inventory.
Okay.
But legally, we have to give the buffer days.
Okay. Is that built into this mostly?
It's still noted in the license.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How many people are you expecting?
140.
Is that, is that average, the average amount of people that show up, or?
That's their final head count. They did a email that went out, they had to RSVP, so it's 140.
Is this an annual thing?
No, I'm not sure exactly why. It's a, I want to say it's a 20-year. They're all a little bit older.
On the town side, we heard about it. Jack McKean was kind of organizing it. And I think initially, the intent was to host it in the brew pub, Battle Road. And obviously, it's not operational yet, so this was kind of the, the second option at the cafe, so I don't think it's something they do annually. It's a big one.
Anyone else? Any questions, any comments from the board? No? Okay.
All right, just a quick question. Did you end up doing the crowd management?
I did, yeah. I have my certificate.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that was just a request of the fire chief.
Yeah, I have it with me.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, no further comments? All those in favor of this full liquor license for one day?
This second.
Yeah, the second did it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, Terrence did it. Yeah, yeah. All those in favor? I think it was five, five of us. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have fun.
Well...
All right, special town meeting prep discussion, Kevin? Will you lead us through that one?
Yeah, I just wanted to have a, as an option, if there's questions or concerns, anybody want to discuss the town meeting tomorrow evening? They have the motion before you. I don't think there's any surprise there. It's a majority open, majority vote session. Lisa and John have reviewed the proposed motion, pretty standard, straightforward. I think if we just talk briefly procedurally, I think the intention was to have, you know, obviously, the moderator will go through his requirements, seek...